No recording.
Okay. Oh, I can't see it. Normally it tells me. That's weird.
Yep, says that for the talk.
Oh yeah, just a bit of delay as usual. Okay. Evening councillors.
Evening.
Evening Chair.
This meeting of the amenities committee. Could I ask everybody to confirm that they can communicate with each other and then after that mute your microphone please?
Councillor Barnes?
Yes, I can hear and see.
Neither of the Biscos are here. Did you have apologies from them Julia?
No, no, I haven't heard anything.
Councillor Bishop, no, not with us. Councillor Broad?
Yes.
Councillor Brown?
Yeah.
Mrs Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs Allenbrook?
Yeah, I can see and hear everybody.
Councillor Garrick?
I can see, but I can't see many people. Never mind.
Councillor Page, I'm assuming we've had apologies Julia?
Nothing new, but she was on well last month, wasn't she? So, yeah.
Councillor Reeve?
Yes, I can see and hear.
Councillor Thomas?
Yes, I can see and hear, but I can't see my own physog, so I don't know what's...
I think you're, have you got your camera covered over?
Well, I might have a drink in front of it. Oh yeah, have I? No.
And obviously councillor Triguna will be apologies. That's everybody Chair.
Okay, thank you. Just to note that Julia, you're still on speaker, so you might want to turn...
Time's up.
And councillor Thomas please. Great, thank you very much. So I think we should probably just run through the apologies for absence again.
So apologies from, I'm assuming the Biscos, councillor Bishop, Paige and Triguna.
Okay, just a point of order. If they haven't actually sent in apologies, should we be recording apologies? I don't know quite how that...
The only ones I would record are probably Paige and Triguna because Kathy did indicate last time and obviously councillor Triguna through yourself.
Okay, thank you very much. I think actually councillor Triguna has contacted Julia anyway, so she said...
Yes, he has.
She's had apologies from him, so. Okay, item two is members to declare any disclosable pecuniary interests or non-registerable interests, including details thereof in respect of any items on this agenda. I've got councillor Davidson with her hand up.
I shall be leaving after part one as I have a conflict of interest in part two.
Can I add Mrs, can I add councillor Mrs Allenbrook needs to as well? Because you're down as a referee on one of the applicants.
Okay.
Sorry, can I just clarify why councillor Davidson needs to leave?
The tenant is, the application in question is a current tenant of Redruth Revival.
Okay, okay, I hadn't realised. Councillor Thomas?
Yes, thank you Chair. I'm not sure about item...
Ten?
Ten. And I'm not sure about item 16, so I bow to the clerk's knowledge.
Okay, Peter?
Shouldn't for either in my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Thomas, can you put your hand down and mute then please? Thank you. That's great. We don't appear to have any of members of the public wishing to speak, so we can dispense with three, four and five. And item six is to confirm the minutes of the meeting of the amenities committee held on the 7th of September 2020. Just checking my agenda, excuse me, to see who is eligible to vote.
Councillor Broad is the only one that will abstain. The rest were all there.
Okay, I've got councillor Davidson with her hand up.
Just proposing.
Thank you. Councillor Brown, are you seconding?
I am indeed.
Brilliant, thank you. All those in favour? Everybody, if anyone wants to abstain or object, can you let me know please? No, okay, that's unanimous. Thanks very much. Item seven is the town clerk's report. See report attached. Pete?
Right, running down through them very quickly, the GI4G, the Redruth Chase Water Railway heritage feature, I hope it's now completed. I don't know if councillor Thomas can confirm that, but I haven't had any updates from Melissa to say otherwise. And also the damage that was caused to some of the new facilities that were put in has, I believe, been repaired.
Okay, councillor Thomas?
You're on mute Ian.
Thank you pardon. Just to confirm that the railway feature is fully installed. I think there's a technical handover at some point this week, which I can't attend. But I am making a couple of observations about, I think the technical term is snags that need to be resolved. But of course, because it's a replica, it looks a bit shiny new. And at this point in time, it doesn't look that authentic. But rather than go up there with a lump hammer and chip away bits of the granite and throw mud all over it, I don't know what else we can do. So over time it will weather, over in time it will hopefully settle in. So yes, that's fully installed. The green gym appears popular, it gets well used apparently. The running track is reinstated to partly its former glory. And as the clerk has indicated, I think the damaged table and bench have been replaced. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks Ian. Running down Guelph and topside, I'm still working with the solicitors on that. Councillor Bishop's not here for an update on Clydesdale Croft Redruth United. The emergency plan, I'm having ongoing discussions with Charlotte. New car park toilets. Alec is doing quite a bit of work, looking to try and secure some form of external funding, but we keep hitting brick walls. And finally, the multi-wheeled facility at East End Plainfield's. Councillor Thomas, myself, Mel Martin are in discussions with the contractor, looking now at a phased approach. We've just got some suggestions of how we can phase it, which the three of us need to sit down, look at cost in terms of going forward and then move back the maverick on that one. And that's my report.
Thank you. Anybody got any questions for the clerk? Okay, noted then. Thank you. Item eight, to receive correspondence.
Right, we've all got the correspondence schedule in front of you, plus the attachments. The first item, just for your information, is arrangements for Cornwall council's waste collection and cleansing contract for 2021/22 on the devolved sites. You will, if you've read it, you will know that we have waste collection at St Rumens, at Plain and Guari play area and at East End Plainfield's. Cornwall council are asking if we want to continue with that at a cost of about £2,500. Just to let you know that Alec is looking at alternatives and we will come up with the best cost-effective way forward.
When are we likely to have that information back?
Hopefully by the next meeting.
Okay, that's fine, thank you. Anybody got any questions about the waste contract? No, okay, thank you.
And the second item on the agenda is the 'We're watching you' campaign that Cornwall council are running, applying to be part of Cornwall council's anti-dog fouling campaign. They're inviting, on the pilot, they invited eight town and parish councils. They're now inviting an additional 15 town and parish councils to participate. And if we're interested, we need to let them know of our interest. But by Friday of this week, but before anyone starts jumping, we need to identify an area. And once we've identified an area, we need to identify a community ambassador that's going to go out and check that area.
Okay, so first of all, has anybody got any areas that they wish to nominate? Councillor Ellenbrook?
Thank you. I have had quite a lot of complaints, consistent complaints for the last three and a half years about Seaview Terrace, Wesley Street and around there. One of the problems you've got is you've got a little grassed area there with a dog poo bin. So a lot of people think that it's good enough to take their dogs to do whatever they need to do in the area, but not actually to pick it up and put it in the bin. So that's one place that I'm aware of. The other place I'm also aware of is St Dave's Road Cemetery. Again, similar things. There is a dog bin thing there, I think, that people don't pick up.
Okay, I've already flagged up to Peter that there's also an issue with, is it called Love Lane?
Church Lane, Love Lane, yeah, that runs up, runs up from basically Grills and Page in East End up through past our allotment site into Coach Lane itself.
And there's the little spur that comes off of that that links up with Trewergie Hill. And there used to be a dog bin at the end of there and they've taken it away. So there is, if anything, even more issues. I'm just thinking about the people amongst us who are dog walkers, councillor Davidson, councillor Barnes. Are you aware of anything?
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
I've had people say about up at Guelph Hall, there's people walking dogs up there and don't clean up. They could do with a dog bin up there.
There are not, just for information Stephen, we requested something a while ago and we were told that there are no new dog bins being installed. The black Jubilee bins that they now install are capable of taking both dog waste and any other litter. So I don't think we'll get, we won't get any more red dog bins. Councillor Davidson? You're on mute Judy.
I would just go along with the other councillors who've mentioned various, they're the ones that I would have said that, you know, I'd heard comments about. And it's a pity we're not having any new dog bins because I think the red ones stand out and people kind of recognise them. But I mean, the only other thing is we would have to fund them and I gather that wouldn't be cheap. No, okay. Thank you.
And obviously time is of the essence with this. If we need to be suggesting a, somebody that would be a champion, it seems like an odd word to be using for the thing that we're talking about. I can't imagine that we would be able to engage somebody by Friday of this week. But I do think it's worth going back to Cornwall council and just at least noting the areas that we have got concerns about. And perhaps saying that they haven't left us very much time to actually engage with the community to find someone prepared to fill that role. We could potentially put something out on social media, asking if anybody is prepared to act in that capacity. Do you think that would be worth doing? Yeah. So perhaps we could ask the community projects manager and the events team if they can put something out on social media to ask if there's anyone that's available that would like to act in, I mean, and you might get, who knows what, who's out there. You might get a very, very committed person that wants to patrol the area and, you know, take it on. Councillor Ellenbrook?
Can we not just rely on social media please? A note, notice up in the town council notice boards would also be a good idea. There are lots of people who don't use social media, particularly older people may find it easier to respond to a poster.
I will, we'll just say, I mean, if it's not really relevant to this meeting, it will be coming up at the next probably full council and then GP meeting. But there's a planned, the Christmas events brochure that normally goes out. Obviously there isn't Christmas events going on as they would normally be, but we're still going to produce something. So there would be the capacity to put something on that, on that document. I realise it is a couple of weeks away from being produced, but at least it would be, it would be delivered to people. I think the plan is if we can get it funded, that we're going to be delivering it to every household. So that would cover that, you know, for those people that are not on social media. Right, I've got councillor Broad and councillor Barnes. You'll need to unmute Paul.
Yeah, what does the, what does the role entail? Entail, no pun intended.
Okay.
If you look at, if you look at page...
If you read the paperwork, it'll tell you.
If you have a look at page four, you're talking about visiting the site, cleaning the site and at least once a week over a three-month period.
Okay, that's fine. I'm only asking so I can look into it.
There's also about posting images and being, informing the public via newsletters, so.
Okay.
Yeah, if you, it is buried in the paperwork Paul, but it is there. So if you go and look at the item, you'll find the description of what's required. Councillor Barnes?
I can see the headlines now. Redruth needs a dog ranger. That's what we want, a dog ranger.
I can see other headlines, but let's not go there.
Okay.
Wouldn't that be the bone ranger?
Well, it could be.
Peter wants to come back.
Can I suggest listening to what everybody's saying, I think the sensible way forward, particularly with the deadline being this Friday, is let's do a considered advertising through both social media and that leaflet so that when it comes round next time, we have somebody in place that's ready to go with it.
Yeah, because it will come back again, won't it? So.
Because at the moment they've done eight, they're asking for 15. And bear in mind, there are 216 town and parish councils in the county. There's an awful lot of area to cover, so, you know, going forward.
Okay, if that's it, moving on please, to receive a report on the work of the facilities department. And Alec is here. Over to you.
Thank you Chair. Always a pleasure to see you councillors. You have my report. I'm ready to answer any questions. Just a couple of updates. Point 5.2 on the chambers, the scaffolding work has now been largely completed. There's another couple of small sections, just to ensure the safety of the Regans contractors when they're accessing the chimneys to get rid of vegetation and things like that. That needs to go on. The initial inspection of the roof, you will all be pleased to know, hasn't turned up anything that we didn't already know from the drone survey with regard to vegetation lifting slates. So it's largely just replacing some large amounts of slates. But no worse damage. There's some wood rot caused by watering dress, but that will be easily rectified. So some good news from the chambers, which is quite welcome. Point 7.4, I've had no apologies. Hang on a second. 7.4, that doesn't make any sense.
That's the cleaning contract at Market Hall.
Yeah, I've also contacted with regard to the cleaning contract at the Sparkle, Market Hall. I've contracted Sparkles today to ask for their readiness and preparedness in light of the Covid lockdown restrictions with regard to works they can and can't do heading into the second lockdown. And I've not received any response back from them. Again, continued non sort of communication really. Point 8.1, I tempted fate by saying that the antisocial behaviour in the area was getting better. As many of you will be aware, that firework didn't go off over the weekend, though many did. So we have, there's been serious problems and numerous minor problems in the area. So I jumped the gun, I apologise. And 1.18.3 with regard to the curb removal from the facilities yard. The reason we're removing them is obviously because the raised curbs that were installed by South West Water are in danger of damaging our new leased vehicles. And I know you wouldn't want me to be doing that. So I met with Mr Nick Hancock, who's a digger driver, who's willing to take on the work. He did numerous works for us at the yard when we moved in. And he's going to provide you with a quote for the actual removal of those curb stones. Other than that councillors, I'm ready when you are.
Okay. Be prepared for the onslaught. Councillor Davidson?
I just wondered Alec, how long we're going to let, I mean, I did, I did read your report and obviously they do seem to be very, very lax in responding. And I think if you're running a business, that is disgusting, particularly when you went back and inquired about this lockdown. I mean, they should be on the ball. What are we going to do about that?
That's a good point councillor. Back to you really. I don't know what more I can do. I ask and I relay when there are issues raised by members of the public or council, I relay it to Sparkles. I go where you lead councillor.
Well, I just think there's people out there desperate for work. Companies are striving to survive this lockdown and this company is just playing fast and loose with us really.
I think the clerk would like to come back in.
Hello? Peter?
It's all right, I've got two mute buttons I'm using. At this stage, we'll give them a timeframe by which to respond. If we've had nothing, we will look to potentially go elsewhere.
Thank you, that's good.
Can I just ask a question Alec? When does the contract expire?
As far as I'm aware councillor, there's no set term on it. It's a rolling contract annually, just annually renewed.
Yeah.
So there must be a date.
I'm pretty sure it's March, April time.
Yeah, okay. I've got councillor Ellenbrook.
This isn't about Sparkles, but every time I go past the former library, I wonder why we've still got our Redruth Town Council signs up there. Would it not be a good idea to take them down?
We're more than happy to take them down. We'll contact Cornwall council and Charlotte Campbell and get permission for our guys to go on site and take them down.
The point being is I think it maybe, it is slightly misleading for the public if we've got the signs up there.
Okay, I've got councillor Brown.
Thank you. Back to Sparkles again. Just if they're failing to keep the toilets in Market Hall clean, then also failing to communicate with us, we could hold them in breach of contracts as a means of leaving that and finding an alternative provider who's actually able to give us what is legally required of us at the moment in terms of having them open. Thank you.
Can I just clarify, are they also the same contractor that is cleaning the toilets at the back of Wilkinson's? Yes, okay, thank you. Councillor Thomas?
Thank you Chair. I've got a number of points on Alex's report, but...
Can I just stop you right there for a second? Can we just stick with the Sparkles thing for a minute?
Yeah, sure. Although councillor Ellenbrook's raised something which...
Yeah, I know. I was just trying to, because we've got a lot of people that want to raise things now. So if we could do it in order, make it helpful.
Okay, thank you.
I'm happy to come back to you. So just about the cleaning.
Okay. Despite what some might say in our council chamber and out on the street, there is no one business that controls the toilets in Market Hall. We during, sorry, we during the lockdown have been allowed access to the disabled toilet for both our staff and customers in need. And we provided that service on the understanding, wrong word, but that we keep an eye on the toilet, which we've done to the best of our ability. So in terms of some anecdotal stuff, and it has been reported to Alec, I think it's on three occasions, the toilets have not been cleaned at all and we've taken it on ourselves to clean it. Another time it ran out of toilet paper very early in the morning, so it clearly hadn't been replenished. The alcoholic gel substance had to be replenished too. So there is evidence that they're not delivering the service that they suggest they do. I have met with a gentleman from Sparkles and two things occurred. One, it might benefit if we had a second toilet roll holder, I mean a locked one. So that at least if one roll ran out, then the other is likely not to have. Bearing in mind that these are accessible toilets for less mobile people. The second one was a receptacle to hold the paper towels, rather than leave them on the side and perhaps end up on the floor. And the last observation, I don't think it's very helpful when Sparkles say that the stuff has been nicked and not necessarily consumed. So that's all I want to say on the Sparkles issue.
Okay, it might be useful Ian, if you were to email Alec with a list of the items that you've just mentioned so that he's aware of exactly what it is that they're doing.
I think Alec is aware.
Yeah, okay. I've got councillor Barnes next. Now you need to unmute Stephen.
This isn't anything to do with Sparkles.
Okay, so can I just stop you then and I'll leave your hand up and I'll come back to you in a minute? I've got councillor Davidson, is this about Sparkles?
Yes, it is. I just wanted to recap that we would actually, as you mentioned, take a deadline and stick to it because I just think we do not need to put up with this. You know, there are plenty of people that would love to do the work, I'm sure. So I just wanted to recap that this was something we'd all agreed.
Yeah, okay. I think, I think everybody's in agreement that we need to give them a date by which, a timeframe by which they have to respond to us. And I think it would be helpful if we were to look at when the contract actually runs out and about what we do with that as well. Okay, so I'm happy to come back with any other questions on the rest of Alex's report now. So I've got councillor Thomas.
Yeah, just before, before I say any more, I have to say that in general, the toilets are kept immaculately clean. You know, it's only on occasion, and there has been three that I know of, when they failed. So the standard of work is good, the reliability isn't.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you.
If that's a fair comment. Going back to what councillor Ellenbrook said about the Redruth Library building on Clinton Road or Ex Library. Of course it occurred to me in Penrind Street, I think we've still got the town council signage up there. At least the last time I went past it. So, you know, above the doorway and at the side. So if we're going to do something about the old library, we ought to be doing something about the old chambers too.
Yeah, fair point.
Okay, if I can just run through Alex's report then if I may. 4.5, it seems that we've asked Redruth Revival if we can use the alcove. My understanding was that the town council owns part of the alcove, not all of it, but part of it. So I'm a bit puzzled why we have to go to Redruth Revival and ask. Surely we just let them park on our bit? So that's the first point. The next one is about the flagpole. Apologies, I didn't, I didn't quite understand. Apologies, I didn't, I didn't quite understand. It says that we can't, we can't have the flagpole on the clock tower. But prior to that, it says that the intention is to refurbish the flagpole at the chambers. I presume they mean in Penrind Street. And fly our flag from that location. So at one point I'm saying, take the signage away from the chambers. And then the next minute we're suggesting we're going to put the flag there. Which, if I'm read that right, I would have thought that we'd either fly the flag at the Red Roof Civic Centre or have a shorter pole on the parapet of the clock tower. I can't understand why we'd want to put it on a built, a, a building which is now effectively surplus to our requirement. So that's that one. Anti-social behaviour. Just to say that we had a couple of incidents in Market Way last week and Market Hall with some young fellows riding bikes. They're causing a bit of a problem racing up and down Market Way between Market Strand and Market Hall. They're going around Market Hall doing wheelies. They're smoking something that doesn't really smell like it's got a lot of nicotine in it. They are being a bit noisy with their music, but I'm put up with that because I'm deaf as a post. But there's, there's been a couple of incidents, they've caused a bit of an issue with Tony Cuso in the mobility shop. And they've caused issues with Guy Hoy down at the bookshop. So Tony and I have both entered it into our antisocial behaviour logs. Guy Hoy has spoken to the police. And I've texted the officer who actually gave me the antisocial behaviour book. But to date, I haven't seen anybody other than these young men. A number of people have spoken to them along the lines of, you know, you're welcome here, but only if you behave yourself. This is our front room, look after it or you're out. And of course, at that time, they're all very polite and what have you. But 20 minutes later, they're back doing the same thing. And I think that is likely itchy.
Okay, so I, what I'd like to do before I come back to councillor Barnes, I'd like to run through the things that Ian has brought up. What the first thing is, the parking. I assume that we're talking about the vehicle that is constantly parking in the that currently line up saying no parking. Is that what we're talking about?
No, I'm not.
Okay. Can you reiterate then what it is you're referring to?
Sorry Chair, I thought it was obvious. We meant, we mentioned about somebody getting a parking ticket, working on our behalf. And according to Alex's report, we've sought permission from Red Roof Revival to allow Kestrel to park on the splat. The point I'm making is, my understanding is the town council does indeed, does indeed own part of the splat, not all of it, part Red Roof Revival, part Red Roof Town Council. So I, I was puzzled as we had, why we had to ask Red Roof Revival to allow Kestrel to park on the splat when we own part of it.
I suspect it's just a courtesy. Alec, did you want to come back?
Yeah, thanks Chair. Basically, the reasoning was, as I'm sure everyone's aware, there's been recent friction concerning parking in, in that area. What I didn't want to do was in trying to solve one problem, potentially create another one. The area in question was suggested by parking enforcement as somewhere that those vehicles purely attending callouts for the alarms in our building. So the, obviously mainly Kestrel Guards, but also Trinity Fire and Warden Security look after our intruder and fire alarm systems. As, as when Kestrel Guards attend, they do tend to check the, through the Buttermarket area as well. I thought it was, it'd be a nice opportunity to, for us and Red Roof Revival to work together. So if Kestrel Guards did attend a call out, that whole, they could park basically anywhere in that alcove and not, I wouldn't be getting any messages the next morning to say that, once again, I had allowed vehicles to park in, in, in that alcove when it wasn't mine to give permission. That's why I did what I did.
Okay, and the flagpole, did you want to come back on that whilst we're?
Certainly Chair, the flagpole, as I put in my report, basically the lanyard supporting the flag snapped. In order to put another flag up, yes, we can use the existing flagpole or I can replace it with a slightly shorter one. I have a problem because the weather vane will catch on any flags of any note if we lower the height of the flagpole drastically. And as I'm sure councillor are aware, the cost of getting a crane, which is what we would need to safely, or scaffolding, and we all know what scaffolding costs, a crane to get up there and safely do anything with the flagpole to attach another flag would, in my opinion, be excessive compared to the benefits. So I immediately came up with a suggestion that as we had scaffold at the chambers, which currently is our, our building or a public building in the centre of the town, that maybe flying a flag there for a while would be a, an alternative. So we are at least flying a flag.
Okay, thank you. Right now, I, I want to come back to the antisocial behaviour thing in a minute. I've got councillor Barnes has been waiting. Stephen, do you want to talk about anything that we've already spoken about or is this something new?
Well, it is something that's been reported. I don't know, my battery's getting quite low and I'm going to be cut out, but I didn't hear the end of what Alex said.
Did you say you didn't hear it?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, so he was talking about the flagpole and the fact that we've got scaffolding up at the chambers at the moment. So he was suggesting we could fly the flag from the flagpole there in the interim.
I still can't hear, I think I'm losing connection here as well.
I think it's not helped by the fact that there are a few people who are muted, so. Let, let me get, let, go back to, to Alec. Did you want to come back Alec?
Do you wish me to repeat what I said about the flagpole then Chair?
I think councillor Barnes has got an issue with his connection. So let's just move on for the minute and we can clarify later. I've got councillor Brown.
Thank you Chair. I was going to say that I'm, I'm minded to agree with councillor Thomas with regards to the, the flag being displayed at a building that's no longer occupied by us. Certainly I appreciate Alex's suggestion that it's useful in the meantime. But in the longer term, perhaps looking at having a flag outside the civic centre might be a, a more feasible idea, given that that is now the home of the town council. Thank you.
Okay, so Alec, you've still got your hand up, so I'm not quite sure if it's because you wanted to come back or it's an old hand, an old hand. Okay, councillor Thomas, are you wishing to come back?
Yes, thank you Chair. Well, just to observe really that the clock tower is iconic. An iconic statement of Red Roof, as is, as is the Red Roof Town Council flag. So I think the two should be married together. I understand what Alex said about the, the lanyard, the wind and the, the weather vane and the need for a crane. But that's why I said that if we brought the flagpole down to the parapet as opposed to oisted 20, 30 foot in the air, whatever it is. In other words, a much shorter pole at parapet level. Then you wouldn't need a crane because you'd be standing looking at the flag from the parapet.
Okay, Alec wants to come back there.
Sorry councillor, just to clarify, the parapet, obviously we then have the, sort of the pinnacle roof that comes up from the parapet. And on top of that, I have a weather vane. I, I, I wasn't making some sort of masculine statement when I got the length of flagpole I did. It's purely because I need to make it safe to clear all the necessary obstructions that would be there. Unless we had absolutely no breeze and then the, the flag would just hang straight down. I'm, I'm sorry if I'm coming across as being flippant, I'm not trying to be. But that's basically the reason for the decision on the flagpole length. It does go up from the parapet, but it has to clear a couple of obstructions to make it safe.
Councillor Barnes, are you wanting to come back? Can you hear us now? You need to unmute.
Yes, I, I can hear. I want to go back and include in the flagpole. But I want to go back first to the, the, the piece about parking at, that we have, the trouble that we have with Kestrel Guards and Cornwall council won't give us the money back.
Right.
And I think we should take that up further with Cornwall council.
Okay, well, would you like to do that on the town council's behalf?
Yes, I'm more than happy to do that. But I think that's disgusting, you know, councils are supposed to work together. And then you get them carrying on like that. I would like to go back now to the flagpole. I think it's quite important to have a flagpole up on the town clock. We've had a flagpole there for years. Every council who's owned it has. And out at United Downs, I think he's called Crays, he's got a metal flag. So we could always go out and see if we, we could get him to make a metal flag, it's Middlesbrough's flag and put that up. He's had it out there for donkey's years.
Maybe we could ask Alec to investigate other possibilities. Peter, did you want to come back?
And, and I am finished. And on item 10, Red Roof Town Festivals and Markets, I'd like to know what's the plans regarding Christmas at present. I know it's going to be a little bit iffy, but I certainly think we can, I'd like to know what the latest thinking is.
Okay, we'll come back to you on that in just a second Stephen. Can I just go back to Peter about the flag? I think he wants to come back about the flag.
Looking at the flagpole, what we'll do is we'll investigate the cost of what a crane is, what it's going to cost to get a crane in to do the work so that we can come back to you. The only thing I'd say about putting a flagpole on to our new building is, I'll remind people it is a listed building and it's the front of the building in particular that's, that is listed and that in itself may cause a problem.
Councillor Thomas, were you wanting to come back? Old hand?
No, I'm, I'm minded to agree with councillor Barnes and that's the point I was making. Both the clock town, clock tower and the, the flag are, in my view, should, are both iconic and should be married together. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Barnes, are you wanting to come back? You need to unmute Stephen? Or is it an old hand?
I'd like to know about the festivals please.
Okay, I've got it on my list, don't worry. Okay, so I've got two outstanding things, one which was raised by councillor Thomas, which is antisocial behaviour and bike riding through Market Way and Market Strand. I suspect that half term probably had an impact on that. I was talking with somebody in town last week and they also mentioned that the, there were young, young people riding their bikes up and down. Perhaps because they've seen the signage that says they can't ride their bikes up and down 4th Street, they're now riding up and down Market Way, I don't know. But it would appear that several unit holders have spoken to them. And as has already been discussed, they, they are very amenable when you ask them to get off their bikes. But as soon as you go back into your shop, they carry on. I don't really know how we resolve it, other than continuing with the antisocial behaviour diaries that the police have provided the unit holders. But I think it's probably fair to say that people going out and shouting at them and telling them to stop is probably the exactly the reaction that they were hoping for. And just exacerbates the situation. Because they're, they're doing it in order to get a reaction. So if you go out there and cause, cause more of a fuss then that's, that, you know, they're happy about that. The town festivals and markets, you will have seen if you had read the report from for council, we're planning for, well, we were planning for markets over Christmas. The first one of those has now obviously had to be cancelled because of the new Covid restrictions. But we are still planning for the other three. So that will be the first three Saturdays of December. So we're, we're carrying on working in conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce and Red Roof Revival. The community projects manager is working really hard with, with them to, to make sure that we get all the stalls filled. And that everything is, is kind of advertised as much as it can be. We're looking at putting in some entertainment if we're allowed to do that outside because we can't put it in, in Market Way itself or in the hall. So I think councillor Barnes can be assured that we are assuming that the government doesn't stop us from doing so. We'll be, we'll be trying to, to go ahead with that. And the clerk is looking into, we always get given one free parking Saturday from Cornwall council. So we've investigated making sure that that happens. And there is also the potential possibility that there may be some funding available to fund the other two Saturdays leading, leading up to Christmas. So we could be in a position where we've got free parking in town on the Saturdays leading up to Christmas, which I think would be really helpful. Councillor Thomas, did you want to come back? You have to unmute Ian.
Great news about the potential for free parking on, on the Saturdays prior to Christmas. Just an observation, I mentioned also about smoking in Market Way and Market Hall. Can we, can we do something about signage for that too? I know Alec is investigating signage for about the bike riders. But I, I'm not sure there's any no smoking signs in Market Hall, is there?
Well, there certainly was at one time because I think Alex's predecessor made sure they were put up.
Okay, fine, I might have missed it. Just, just to pick up on.
As a smoker, I can confirm that.
Can I just pick up on also about the antisocial behaviour? Two things. Firstly, I, I spoke to our friends on their bikes in a very adult, mature and fatherly way. Firstly, I did not shout at them. But I assure you this councillor Reeve, if a young man on a bicycle almost scats me over, or my wife, or my child, or my customers, believe me, I won't only just shout at him, I'll scat him off the frigging bike. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to know that I wasn't implying councillor Thomas that it was you that had shouted at them. I was just informed that there was a, a unit holder who had done so. Okay, thank you. Has anybody got anything else on Alex's report that they would like to ask a question on? No. Okay. Oh, councillor Barnes, go on.
Yeah, I'm going to see Malcolm Brown at the council meeting tomorrow. Would you like me to ask him if he'd like to be Father Christmas for us?
No.
That's a no, is it? All right. All right. What do you think, Barbara?
She's not answering. Councillor, is that an old hand or do you wish to come back?
No, I just wished to come back really because I'm getting rather irritated about some of the comments on antisocial behaviour and people's reaction to it. But I think it's probably going to come out wrong. But I think perhaps the town council ought to give the issue of antisocial behaviour and the harassment of their unitholders some consideration too. Because there's been racist comments, there's been ageist comments, I can assure you. So, you know, it's a two-way street we all live in.
Okay, councillor Ellenbrook.
Thanks, not sorry, I didn't know whether my hand worked or not then. If there is a problem in Market Way, and I'm not disputing that there is, could you not ask John Thorne if he could supply everybody with ASB diaries?
I think they've got them.
Well, if they've got them, then that's what they need to do, they need to fill them out.
Yeah, which is what I was saying, which is what I was saying earlier.
Right, okay, sorry, I must have missed that.
No, no, I think according to councillor Thomas, they have been supplied with the diaries. So they just need to make sure they keep them filled out.
Yeah, I mean, if I can just come back on that, I had an ASB issue up in Seaview Terrace. And the ASB diaries were incredibly useful for the local constabulary when they did go up there to sort out the problems. So I would recommend that they have those and have all the markets, all our tenants in Market Way being given the little blue, I think they're called Z cards, the community safety cards. John Thorne picked up a load from me the end of last week. And he was going to go around possibly with the ASB coordinator and Ollie Bayliss to give them to all the shopkeepers. So that if they do have instances of antisocial behaviour or anything else that they see, there are both phone numbers, but more importantly, email addresses on those community safety cards, which people are recommended to use. And I can just say, the more people record the issues that they are having, the more it will be dealt with. You won't necessarily see a police officer come in immediate response to that, but you do have a record which is kept. So it's worth doing it that way. Thank you.
So just to let you know, Barbara, that I saw John Thorne in the town on Friday with the aforementioned Z cards in his hand and he was delivering them to the shops. I cannot obviously tell you exactly who he had been to. I will say that he was on his own and I will just leave it there. Councillor Brown.
Thank you, Chair. I would just say there's a very fine line between antisocial behaviour and harassment. And certainly if any of the Market Way holders feel that they are being harassed, then I think we should communicate to them that they do need to contact the police in that instance. Particularly if it's coming to things like racism, because that's not acceptable. And the police would want to be informed immediately in that instance. Or at least via the 111, possibly the online reporting tool. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Brown. Has anybody got anything else for Alec before I move on? Alec?
Yeah, just one final thing, councillor sort of is linked. I'd like to sort of have it recorded. The facilities teams, thanks to councillor Tremaine, who discovered over the weekend that the small door leading to our clock tower, and I agree entirely with all councillors who say it is a beautiful monument in the middle of our town. Somebody decided to rip the door off, I don't know whether to have it as a memento or whatever. Councillor Tremaine obviously gave up his own time, came in and carried out a fantastic repair, which meant that, to be honest with you, we didn't have to. So that's great, although we have been down and, shall we say, solidified that repair now. Just to let councillor aware that I got an email today from PCSO John Salmon, who's one of the excellent PCSO teams that just does look after the town. He's now owing to absentees from the PCSO ranks. He no longer covers Redruth, he's now been transferred to Camborne, which is, to be honest with you, quite upsetting from my standpoint. Because we've got a team of PCSOs who are fantastic, in my opinion. And to lose one of them, particularly to Redruth West, is galling, to say the least. And the final thing is, just to be mindful, councillors, that I did include in my report seeking your permission to donate a piece of working, sub-functional, safe equipment to the Gwyl and Top organisation so they can better look after their grounds. And before the Chair maybe says to vote and approve my report, I just want to make sure you are all happy for me to donate that piece of equipment to them. So I just wanted to highlight that particular point in my report. Thanks, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thanks for mentioning about the clock tower door, Alec. I was going to mention it at the end there, but you've done it, so that's fine. I think councillor Tremaine spent a considerable amount of time on Saturday morning repairing the door or putting it back to where it should be. And there are also a couple of the unitholders in Market Way who arrived very early in the morning and had discovered that the door was on the floor. And they actually, of their own volition, made sure that it was put back in place. And they contacted councillor Tremaine to let him know what had happened. And he duly arrived and sorted it out. So between them, I think they did a sterling job, so I'd like to say thank you very much to them. Whilst we're on the antisocial behaviour topic, I don't want to dwell on this, but I've had several questions from councillors about the rough sleepers that have appeared in town over the last few days. I just want to assure all councillors that I reported it immediately, that I became aware that it was happening. The Safer Towns members, including councillor Ellenbrook, have been kept fully appraised by Cornwall Council as to what has been put in place. I'm happy to share that with everybody if you want the finer detail, but it is quite lengthy. Suffice to say that whilst it might appear that nothing is being done, behind the scenes, there is an awful lot of work being carried out to make sure that these people are appropriately dealt with. It is not an easy situation, it is very complicated. And Covid is not helping that situation. But we will be monitoring it all the time to make sure that both the people who are rough sleeping and the wider public are kept safe. Thank you, councillor Thomas.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I was quite disappointed to see tents being erected in the doorways of Peacock's and M&amp;C. And I just wondered which generous member of the public had donated those tents, but hey ho. My question really goes back to Alex's recommendation. Bearing in mind, we're dealing with the public purse. Has the, I'll take it, serviceable Stiggo Ride On mower got any value?
Alec, do you want to come back?
To be honest with you councillor, I mean, yes, would we get some money for it? But I would have thought on a cost versus benefits analysis, helping out an organisation that we have very strong links with, that would mean in the long run, maybe my team, your team, sorry, wouldn't have to go up there quite so often to cut the grass, would have better long-term, both community and economic benefits. But again, as always, I go where you lead.
Thank you. Councillor Ellenbrook.
Yeah, just finally, Chair, if I can, coming back to what you were saying about the rough sleepers and to assure councillor Thomas that as far as I'm aware, the tents that are currently being used have actually given to those people by Cornwall Council, in actual fact. There is a huge amount of work going on to try and get suitable accommodation for those individuals who are on the streets who are willing, and this is the big word, are willing to actually go indoors. And it is an extremely difficult situation for us as a council, this is Cornwall Council, because due to Covid, we can no longer put people in accommodation where they share facilities. They have to have individual facilities. And you will have seen the shipping container pub things that are up in Penzance and in Truro. They cost a lot of money, they have to have planning permission, they have to be put in safely. I'm aware that the government has given Cornwall Council more money again to get rough sleepers off the streets. And I do know from conversations I've had with the officers, both from Cornwall Housing and from Cornwall Council that are dealing with the individuals that are rough sleeping at the moment, that they are doing their utmost. However, if people choose not to take the help that they are offered, there is very little that we, as a society, can do. But I assure you that as much work as possible is being done, those people are being visited on a very regular basis by quite a large team of people. So it is distressing to see it, I accept that. However, I also know that Cornwall Council and the partners are doing their utmost to make sure that those people are kept safe and as safe as they possibly can be. But as I say, the tents, I am given to understand and the other facilities that they have there are actually supplied to them by Cornwall Council. Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Barbara. And that is also my understanding that that's been provided by their support teams. And just to make it very clear, that there is no suggestion that they are the people that are causing the antisocial behaviour that's happening in the town. Everything that I'm given to understand by local shopkeepers is that they are not causing any issues. It's just the perception of the public that they're there that is causing the problem. And the other people that are around in the town that are causing the issues. But we will continue to monitor it and keep you appraised. And one last thing that I just want to flag up is the foyer project, which is situated above our building, well, is our building, it's situated above the civic centre. It's been brought to my attention that there have been several incidents of people throwing things out of the window and just general antisocial behaviour that's going on. And I just want to make sure that as the landlords of that building, we are keeping an eye on what is happening up there and making sure that the situation is safe. Because I'm concerned that it might not be. I've got councillor Barnes and then councillor Thomas.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Regarding this Ride On mower, could we not give it to them up at Gwyl and Top? Suggest they use it to go in St Dave Road Cemetery from time to time and give that a little trim?
The clerk is shaking his head, Stephen. I suspect it's probably not covered by health and safety insurance and risk assessments, it would be my thought. Barbara, did you want to come back on that?
Yeah, you can't do that because under GI4G, the actual maintenance of that cemetery is done on a cutting basis, which has already been laid down. So no, nobody should be going in there, cutting anything other than when it's supposed to be cut.
And Gwyl and Top won't have the necessary insurance cover. The end of the day, Gwyl and Top, if you all recall, is leased, the actual building and premises is leased to us on a 25-year lease. And the Adventure Playground people are in there effectively on our behalf. So all we will be doing is letting them have a piece of equipment to do the work that currently the facilities team do from time to time anyway.
Right, okay, I think we've had enough discussion around this. Councillor Thomas, you want to come back? Is this something new or is this just in response?
It's new in as much as you mentioned antisocial behaviour and the foyer in the same sentence.
Right, okay.
Just to say that if you speak to one of the traders in Market Way, not me, he believes that one of the individuals on the bikes resides in the foyer.
Okay. Thank you, councillor Barnes. Or is that an old hand?
It's an old hand.
Okay, thank you very much. Right, I would like to move that we accept Alex's report and that we go with his recommendation, including the donation of the mower to Gwyl and Tops. Councillor Brown is proposing that, or seconding my proposal, thanks very much. Anybody going to object? Councillor Broad, are you objecting? No. You're muted.
We'll assume everybody's in favour.
Okay, thank you very much. Right, item 10, use of Market Hall by Redruth Town Band in the run-up to Christmas. This is something that councillor Thomas mooted at last week's full council meeting. I don't know whether either the clerk or Alec has got anything to say about this.
Other than can councillor Thomas expand at the moment, bearing in mind, I think last week he indicated Saturdays, but bear in mind that Market Hall will be used or is proposed to be used for markets for the Saturdays running up to Christmas, that's my concern. I wasn't exactly sure what his proposals were.
But let's go to councillor Thomas then, and I'll come back to councillor Barnes and councillor Brown.
Yes, thank you, Chair. As I said in the week or last week, it's nothing certain. And by God, doesn't Boris just change that certainty for us in the last few hours? The thought was that, as I mentioned, Redruth Town Band, one haven't got a home at the moment. Secondly, have no access for rehearsals or performances. In fact, they can't perform because of legislation. And they asked if it was possible to, pre-Christmas, use one corner of the Market Hall for a four, whatever you call it, quartet or a quintet, to perform some sort of music, whether it be carols or whatever. They, on the face of it, have been engaged by the Penn Venton to do Christmas carols at their Christmas evening meals. And the Penn Venton had kindly agreed that they could rehearse in the hotel during November. But of course, very recently, that's gone by the board because the Penn Venton will be closed and therefore they will not be able to use that rehearsal space. So in terms of need, if it is a need, it's now greater. So fully aware that we've got a programme of markets, whether they'll be allowed to go ahead or not is one thing. Secondly, I understand that we, as a town, would like a Christmas tree in the corner of the Market Hall nearest the bin store. And I was just wondering, if we're going to have a Christmas tree there, wouldn't it, would it or wouldn't it be nice if legislation allows us to have some music for a couple of hours on a Saturday morning? Not just to accompany the Christmas tree, but potentially the Christmas markets. Of course, the November one has gone by the board already, as you'll probably appreciate. But it's still a possibility of the three Saturdays in December. So it's over to you, councillors. Thank you.
Councillor Barnes? Need to unmute, Stephen.
Trying to do that. Yeah, I think it's a good idea. Always adds a little bit of Christmas cheer. And I think we should try and fit it in if we can somewhere.
Okay, thank you, councillor Brown.
Button that time. Right, so as far as this goes, always great to have the music. We would need to bear in mind that if it's in the indoor setting, it'd need to be a full, clear two metres around them. And in any indoor setting, we would be required to have track and trace if there is a live music, because it then becomes a performance venue. So I would be more inclined to recommend market- So I would be more inclined to recommend Market Strand or the Butter Market if they'll have the band. Because the music would obviously be fantastic for the atmosphere, but the indoor nature would give us some legal difficulties.
Okay, thank you. Alec, did you want to come back?
Just one other thing, thank you, Chair, is that obviously we have a Christmas tree and then we have a band. It's a limited space considering as councillor Brown, so eloquently put regarding, obviously the Covid situation at the moment, we would have to remove some stalls from the site to make it Covid compliant with regards to social distancing, which we would be more than happy to do. But I just want to counsel aware that it then makes it potentially less viable as an actual market area, that's all.
And just to point out that we've already had to reduce the number of stalls in Market Hall in order to be Covid compliant. So I suspect that we would have to lose half of them in order to put the band in place. Councillor Barnes, did you want to come back? There we go.
So I think we could either accommodate them in that alcove bit and/or ask for them to go into the Butter Market where they've got a little stage. And I think that would probably be a better place.
Yeah, I quite agree. Councillor Thomas?
Thank you, Chair. I wasn't aware about the track and trace and the music space, so I fully understand that. Although it's a bit bizarre when we're talking about social distancing that we have the market stalls there at all. But anyway, that's not for me to concern myself with. Yes, the splat in our park there would be an ideal location. That's the alcove for those who don't know. Or our friends in Redruth Revival might be quite keen. I'm not sure. I haven't had that discussion. So I take it I assume it's going to be a no from my colleagues on the town council. So therefore I'll make inquiries elsewhere. Thank you.
I've got councillor Davidson. I'm hoping she might be able to come back on behalf of Redruth Revival with her other hat on.
Well, certainly, we like to have, as you know, a variety of music at markets. We usually have our Mr B. But obviously, we're all fans of the town band. So it's not for me to say, but we do have a meeting before the end of November. It'll have to be a Zoom this time, but I can certainly put it on the agenda for councillor Thomas and see what the others think. But I mean, as you know, we always host a variety of music.
And if I could just also come back because the market is joint affair between Redruth Revival's chamber and the town council. And the music, usually they require the entire time that the market is on to be covered by some kind of music. But because they've extended the time from 10 till 4, whereas we normally do 10 till 2, there'll be a couple of hours when we won't have already got something arranged. I'm sure that the joint committee would be only too happy to have the band in attendance. So I'm more than happy to put that forwards as well as councillor Davidson. Councillor Brown, did you want to come back?
Yes, just to say for the benefit of councillor Thomas and the town band, I don't want to be awkward. It's a very, very unfortunate legal technicality. But at least if the Butter Market is undercover, or if it were to be the splat, I'm sure we could arrange a tent or some sort of shelter just in case. Because the band would be very welcome and we would want to make them as comfortable as possible.
Okay, councillor Thomas, is that an old hand?
No, it's a current one. Just to thank yourself and councillor Davidson and councillor Brown for their comments, their positive comments. But as I said last week, you know, there's so much uncertainty out there. This is only a question. It's not a definite. So appreciate if you can make inquiries, but don't be reliant on it being taken up. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Allenbrook?
Yeah, back in the Dark Ages, when Market Way was first developed, in the, whatever we call it, the splat, the bit outside, the cafe used to have a seating area there where they had tables and chairs. And above, there used to be a canopy that actually pulled out. Now, I suspect that that is probably, not to put too fine a point in it, probably knackered by now. But has anybody had it? It is, right, there you are. But the other thing is that I think that I heard that Redruth Revival were looking to purchase some gazebo type things to put stuff up in the in the town. Are you still doing that or not?
So just to clarify, Redruth Revival put in a awards-for-all bid to buy some gazebos, but unfortunately it wasn't successful. Now looking for alternative funding. I think they're thinking that they might be able to purchase some themselves. They would be extremely happy, I think, if the town council would be prepared to join them in that endeavour. But that's not for this meeting.
Have they actually thought about going to CLLD because they've got a small amount of funding? I think it's up to £10,000, which is a very less onerous application than the full CLLD funding. Have you looked at that for Redruth Revival?
I'm not sure if they have, but councillor Davidson could maybe clarify.
I haven't heard. Obviously, it was touched on at our meeting last week that we didn't get our awards for all. And it was mentioned that we might look at seeing whether we could, with the town council, purchase some gazebos. But certainly I didn't hear the CLLD mentioned, Barbara. So again, I'll put that on the next agenda. It's a couple of weeks' time.
It's, CLLD have a small enterprise grant scheme or something like that.
Small enterprise, is it?
I'm sure it is. It's up to £10,000. There's a business one and a community one. It's certainly worth looking at because that's a relatively easy process to go through.
I will actually, I won't wait for the meeting. Tomorrow, I'll send an email to Ross to see, because he's usually on the board, but he might have missed this one. So it's a small enterprise grant from CLLD?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you get any problems, get in touch with Judith Han, who's the programme director. J double N. If you've got a problem, email me Judy and I'll send you the
Okay, as Trump would say, I'm on it.
I've got councillor Garrick. You need to unmute Colin.
Sorry about that, I've been very quiet tonight. I just wanted to reiterate what Barbara said. Yeah, Judy, please approach CLLD.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Councillor Barnes, is that an old hand?
No.
Okay.
There is also an alternative available to the band and that's the St Roman's Gardens. You've got the canopy down there they can go into.
Okay, thank you for that comment. Okay, so we need to decide whether or not we want to
Ever finish tonight?
Exactly. I think it sounds as if with the advice that councillor Brown has put forward that we won't be able to exceed councillor Thomas's request. So do we need somebody to propose that or are we just
I don't think that was quite true. We said, you know, they could go on the splat or we'll talk to our neighbours and see if we can get them to go into the Butter Market.
The proposal is the use of Market Hall. So I think we have to say we can't go ahead with the use of Market Hall, but we have put forward alternative proposals. So councillor Brown, you're proposing that?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Could I have somebody to second that, please? Looking around. Councillor Davidson, thank you. Is anybody going to either vote against or abstain? Councillor Thomas, I take it you're abstaining? You need to unmute.
Yes, I am abstaining, but of course now I'm worried that any approach to the owners of the splat, whoever it is, or to the Redruth Revival, if councillor Brown is right, and I don't doubt it, it becomes an entertainment space. We're in the same situation with track and trace.
I think if I'm right, Ian, it's because it's an enclosed space. If it's outside, it's slightly different, the requirements.
Okay, thank you.
The technicality is indoor rather than enclosed.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to item 11, school crossing patrol Clinton Road. See report attached. Anybody wish to say anything? Councillor Thomas?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. You will recall this was something that I instigated, I guess, in as much as that Mr Davy and his colleague in Trebergie Road faced redundancy and the removal of the two school crossing patrol officers for those areas. And yes, there was public uproar. Yes, the town council considered it, but we hoped that the school would make contribution, but they didn't. So the end result was that the town council took them on and the community and schools and everybody else was very grateful. However, I did say at the time that whilst we effectively put in a rescue package, that once those individuals became of retirement age, the town council should consider its options. That's not to say to do away with the school crossing patrol. But I'd rather have said this in part two, but the discussion at the time was more about Trebergie Road than it was Clinton Road. And one of my thoughts was that when that individual retires, we should consider putting in a panda crossing or, you know, one of these crossings that can be provided. Because the existing crossing patrol is over a single carriageway, the road narrows and there's effectively a set out from both sides of the road. So it becomes one single lane. So from my perspective, that particular position lends itself to the likes of a panda crossing. I.e. the one-off expense of installing it, but not the ongoing costs of wages. However, in Mr Davy's case, this is a very, very busy junction on Clinton Road. And I'm not sure what solution could be provided, but I think it's something that we should investigate. Whether it be traffic lights, whether it be a zebra crossing, whether it be a panda crossing. I do think, to be frank, there is a comment there that says, when considering the post-location, you would wish to know that it serves no more than 20 children per day. I dispute that. I would say it's far more than 20. youths from Redruth School, Trebergie School, juniors and infants use it. And children going further afield as well. But not only that, it's not just schoolchildren. It provides a community service to the elderly, to the blind and to the infirm. I know that's not the purpose of the school crossing patrol, but these individuals are community workers and they bend over backwards to assist where they can. So please don't be reliant on a comment that says that it only serves no more than 20 children per day, because I don't believe it. And in fact, I would say it's a lot more, but it's also a community service as well. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Do you have a proposal then, councillor Thomas?
I propose, if I'm allowed to, that we investigate alternative solutions to a manual school crossing patrol officer. But the fallback position is that we should seek to employ one. Thank you.
Okay. Has anybody got any other comment or is there anyone who would like to second councillor Thomas's proposal, councillor Ellenbrook?
What slightly bothers me is this post finishes on the 18th of December. And that doesn't give us an awful lot of time to do anything. You certainly won't get, knowing how slow they are with the usual traffic regulation things. I think it's extremely unlikely, even if we've got any sort of pedestrian-type crossing there, it would be done within the next three years, frankly. So I do think that we need to look at this as a matter of but I would support the proposal on the report that we get on and do something about it. But I would just remind people that we are in the darkest time of the year in terms of streetlights and what have you. And this is actually a really important community facility. So I'll second the proposal as it's written.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Barnes, do you want to say something?
Well, no, I'll go along with what Barbara said.
Okay, thank you. So I've got
I wouldn't have been so generous as her in her kind words.
I've got a proposal from councillor Thomas, which has been seconded by councillor Ellenbrook. Would anybody want to either abstain or object from that? Or are we all happy to support? I think we're all happy to support. I'm just mindful that it needs to be a timely response. So we cannot afford to leave it till the next meeting of this committee. So I suggest that it comes back to full council at the end of this month. Councillor Barnes, old hand? Okay, or you want to speak?
It is an old hand, but I think if you think you're going to get a reply by the end of the month, you're being extremely optimistic.
Well, what else can we do?
Exactly.
Okay. I think everybody is therefore in favour of that unless anybody wants to abstain. If you could please or object, please let me know. Okay, thank you. Item 12 is Triscirby playing field. You've got report in front of you. Would somebody like to propose, councillor Ellenbrook? Or you want to speak?
Yeah, blimmin' things. No, I'm very happy to propose this. There is a substantial amount of money coming for section 106. We need to make sure that we spend it wisely and for the benefit of Redruth. So can we please crack on with this one as well? We've been waiting a long time for this money to appear.
Okay, councillor Thomas? You're muted, Ian.
Sorry, I'm happy to second that, although I'd like to make an amendment to the recommendation, being the pedantic old chap that I am.
Which is?
That where it says associated S06 funding, it becomes section 106 funding.
Okay, and I've got councillor Brown. You want to ask a question, I'm assuming?
Thank you, Chair. And thank you, councillor Thomas. I didn't pick that one up and I'm normally pedantic as well. When it comes to this kind of thing, who is it that normally goes and attends the negotiations, as it were? Is it the town clerk and the chair of amenities?
I think that's been the way it's happened in the past.
Yeah, I would like to be involved as well because it is actually in my patch is where the section 106 money has actually come from. And in actual fact, it has been me that has been pushing this all the way along. I have to say, if it weren't for me, this money would still be sitting there with everybody going, oh, we've got some money. What are we going to do with it? Okay, so I would like to have some input in it as well, please.
I think the general accepted way that these things work when it comes to devolution is that the Cornwall councils are automatically included in the discussions. I think it would just be, it would be good if there was representation from the town council in terms of the clerk and myself as well. So I've got a proposal from councillor Ellenbrook. Are you happy to accept councillor Thomas's
Yes.
Amendment?
Yes, to everything.
Thomas, I take it that's an old hand, Ian? Yeah, okay.
So you're pushing swings, are you? You're pushing swings, are you Barbara?
Does anybody want to abstain or object? If not, I'll assume that everybody's in favour.
I'm on the skateboards, mate.
Item 12, Triscobie Playing Field. Oh no, sorry, item 13, to consider the amenities committee budget. Peter?
Right, you've all got before you the proposed budget for the responsibilities that sit within this committee. I've included all sorts in here, including the £25,000 as the sort of first instalment towards the refurbishment of the public toilets. Take it into account as necessary inflation and other things. Clearly, until we get to look at the whole budget of where we are in the situation regarding the council tax database and everything else, that's when things like perhaps the refurbishment or the climate change are things that perhaps need to come out. But I would ask that members consider and approve this before you now and we'll look at it in the round, certainly within the ANAG committee before it goes to council with a final recommendation.
Has anybody got any questions? I'm happy to propose the recommendation, councillor Barnes.
Yes. Under Other Services, the last one, 4524, Gwat Maintenance.
Yeah, that's Gueland Top.
All right.
That's the people we're giving the lawnmower to, Stephen.
All right.
Okay. I've got councillor Brown, are you seconding the proposal?
Fully happy to second. This meeting's been going on for a while.
Thanks very much. Is anybody going to object or abstain? No, I'll take that as read then. Item 14, update from the Environment Working Group. As promised at the last meeting of this committee, Red Roof Town Council Climate Action Plan Draft has been attached for your bedtime reading over the weekend. Anybody got any comments? I would like to think if nobody wants to make any amendments to this, it will be going to full council for approval at the end of the month. But I just wanted to make sure that you all had the opportunity to have sight of it in the meantime. Councillor Garrick?
Thank you Chair. I just wanted, right at the end, you mentioned community transport scheme helping the more vulnerable to get to essential appointments. Can you clarify what you mean by that? What type of scheme you're talking about? I was purely out of interest, I used to be the committee transport officer of the council, so I just wonder what, is that a dialer ride scheme?
There's nothing specific set in stone. It is just to look at the possibility of putting something in place. So I'd be very happy for you to develop a policy around that in more detail. Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, okay.
You walked right into that one. Councillor Thomas?
Yeah, thank you, thank you Chair. Just flicking through it. Is there anything in there about the use of electric vehicles?
Yes.
Brilliant, thank you.
Okay, so if any, councillor Allenbrook?
Yeah, sorry, very briefly, policy six, I think it is. It's very difficult hopping from...
It is, I agree.
Your system for waste food and suchlike and reducing the impact of businesses on the environment. As part of Cornwall Council's much delayed, but eventually happening soon, I think, waste contracts, there is some interesting stuff in there. Waste food is one of those things that is in there. So it may be worthwhile people just taking a quick canter through what is proposed because Cornwall Council are also looking at working with businesses on their food waste as well, I think, if I read it right.
Can I just say, this has been done taking into account whatever Cornwall Council's already got in place and seeking to either match that or go above that. A lot of the work is done not by the Town Council, but by some of the other groups that are in existence. So there's lots of co-working going on there. You've got plenty of time to look at it over the next two or three weeks. If there is anything that you would really want to either see added or, you know, feel it's not quite right, then please come back to me. But it very broadly follows what other towns have put in their policies. And when the Climate Action Group, the Network Panel Climate Action Group met in February, we had a whole day of workshops around developing a climate action plan. So that's what this has essentially come out of. So it very much kind of goes along the lines of travel of where everyone else is going. Colin, is that an old hand? Yeah, I'm guessing it is. All right, I think at this point, I'm just happy that everybody has had sight of it and be aware that it will be on full council for the end of November as a recommendation that we adopt it. So you need to read it in the meantime because if there is anything that you object to, we need to know about it by then. Okay? Thanks very much. Item 15 is to exclude the press and public from the meeting for the remaining item of business as their presence would be prejudicial to the public interest by virtue of the confidential nature of the subject matter, brackets contracting confidence and on the ground if it involves the likely disclosure of exempt information as defined in part one of Schedule 12A of the 1972 Local Government Act. Councillor Davidson?
I'm just about to leave the meeting now Chair, so good night everybody, see you at the end of the month. Thank you.
By then.
Can somebody please propose and second?
That's what I was hoping. I'm happy to propose. Would somebody like to second?
Councillor Garrick has got his hand up.
Thank you very much. Alec, are you wanting to speak? No, okay, thank you.
Are you wanting to take leave, Alec?
You've got your hand up again now. You need to unmute.